Thank you. Our two call the meeting order, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
President Mungy.
Here.
Vice President Matthews.
Here.
Member Furlong.
Here.
Member Bramshire.
Here.
Member Gallardi.
Here.
And Council Representative Cole.
Here.
And staff and ex officio members present today are Executive Director Frandl, Community Development Director Grams, and EDA Secretary Tring.
Thank you very much. Get a motion to have the agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved. Member Furlong?
Second.
Second. Member Cole, as a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Approval of minutes?
Thank you. Don't need them.
The approval of minutes of September 10th, 2024, meeting minutes.
Approval for that?
Good.
Any questions? If not, Councilmember Cole? All right, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Joe. Thanks. All right. Anything to the public? We're good?
We're good.
All right. EDA discussion, act item, is it be you?
Go ahead, sir.
I'll kick it off.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, just a couple of updates and discussion items for you this evening. First and foremost, the Marcus Street Commons request for proposals. We did submit that, and we're looking for interested developers to comment or generate submissions for the development proposals. We, I have personally talked to five different developers who are interested in the site, various degree interest, of course. Lot of, you know, talking about some of the site constraints and what are some of the do's and don'ts, and then just kind of general specifics of, you know, what is the city looking for? What is the council interested in? What type of project? Just on a high level, general type things. We did actually meet with Jim Lavelle, the developer of Article VII, just a week or two ago. He's interested in submitting a proposal, and we had a really good dialogue with him and his team. So I do believe that they might be submitting a proposal to us. But the proposals, the RFP will be open through the end of this year. So we're hoping to get some in here kind of late, you know, holidays. It kind of throws a wrench into some things, but it's generated some decent interest, and we're hoping to get a couple of proposals in.
Any ideas of what is it, what they're looking at going into? Is it living? Is it residential type of thing?
Yeah, the RFP's request that it's a mixed use development based on our zoning and what we're, the city is particularly interested in. I think you all know it comes down to dollars and cents, right? It, the type of project, whether it's affordable or market rate, whether it's a senior or what have you. I mean, those all kind of move the needle one way or the other. So a lot of the discussion I think that we'll probably be having is what sort of product are we interested there? Interested in there? But really, that's driven by the developer and what they think they can build. Any other questions on that one?
Next steps going forward after, after the RFP closes, are they gonna come present to the EDA? Or are you gonna determine internally? How have you guys talked through what next steps are?
Yeah, so what we plan on doing is we'll obviously collect RFPs. We'll review them sort of at a staff level, and then the idea is bring them forward to the EDA with just some high level here is kind of the projects that we received. Do you want to move forward with, you know, whether you're interviewing those developers? Or if you're, you know, not interested in that type of product, then we can make a decision to keep the RFP open longer or do something else. Otherwise, yeah, the idea would, you know, we would come back to the EDA, make a presentation. You would give a recommendation to the city council on whether or not you want to see something like this move forward. And then you start going through the development process, which is a whole nother side issue.
So you think there's gonna be more than one? Or do you think Lavelle is the only one you got so far?
I would, I would, I would guess that Lavelle is the one that we're, will probably receive one. The others that I've talked to, you know, kind of dependent, good dialogue with each of them, but remains to be seen.
We did have a meeting with another developer. It was early on in their developing career, but that had stepped up. That was the first one that kind of stepped up and had a conversation with us. And then, then Lavelle came in after that. But that RFP goes down, what, the last day of the month here?
December, yep.
Yeah, so we'll see. We haven't gotten any others in yet.
All right. The next item, the EDA facade program and downtown design manual. That is something that we discussed at the September meeting. We're reviewing options for the downtown design manual in 2025, which will, of course, impact the EDA facade program. The cost of the design manual update has been included in the 2025 EDA budget. So we're looking forward to the beginning, early in next year, really start hammering in down and figure out, okay, how do we want to move forward with a design manual update? Which again, then kind of feeds into that facade program. So that's where we are with that project at the time. So more to come on in 2025 on that. The Article VII update, Article VII building is now open. We did have a ribbon cutting ceremony last Wednesday on December 4th. It was well attended. I saw, I wasn't able to attend, I apologize, but I saw a number of you there, so great to see that. Developer does state that more and more units are being developed, or sorry, more and more units are being leased each week, and I think.
Forty.
Forty. Forty percent, so. It's a good start, which was up from 20 about a month and a half ago, so making.
We're a resident right there.
We do.
Yes, we do.
But I was just talking to him about his commute. It's about a four minute walk, he said, so not bad.
Against wind, with the wind, that's where you're going. Uphills both ways.
Pass two bars along the way.
There you go.
I might add a couple minutes.
Three.
The Delaware Place Townhome Project is obviously being constructed now. Units nine and 10 are being constructed. Those will initially be the show units. They really had really nice warm fall weather, which allowed the contractor to get a jump on a lot of the work on the site. So that is making really good progress. The council did just approve some patio utility easement encroachment agreements last, at the last council meeting, so that's all done and taken care of. Things are moving along nicely, and we're hoping that over the winter months, they'll start to build some of the other units, but, you know, probably spring is when you're really gonna see a lot of work done there, so.
On the drive by here, it looks like they've got forms in for the next two units. So I don't know if that means they've already had interest and sold stuff and continue to move forward or what? But yeah, they're moving forward.
It's great. And then Brian, you want to hand out the CETA one?
Well, would you want to start that off or not?
Doesn't matter. You can, you've, yeah, you can start and I can, I can.
So CETA. Yep, no worries. Community Economic Development Associates, that's a group that can come in and do work on cities' behalfs. There are many different levels that they do. They can, you know, come in at one day every other week, or they can come in five days a week and work, depending what you want. She came in to tour of the city. I met with her just a little bit first, and I said, well, is there anything you want to know before you just start driving around the town to get an idea? I said, you might not even know where one town stops and another town starts. And she goes, well, that's all part of the process. She goes, we'll kind of go around, see if things are self explanatory. If I'm having trouble, what I'll do is I'll pull up your website, make sure, you know, you have your wayfinding signs, you have things in place that would help, you know, maybe a developer coming through your town to see what you have to offer. So she was gonna go out and do all that. She said she'd call if she had any questions. I didn't get a call. So they're gonna put together a report here probably next week or two and get back to us on their findings, which would be at a higher level. And then maybe at that point, we can schedule a time for them to come in, and you guys can ask more questions and see if it's the right fit for us to have somebody do that work for us. But Tim initially reached out to CETA, so I'll turn it over to you, Tim.
Yeah, I reached out to them probably a month or so back. Just as we continue our search for someone to help us out is our proverbial cheerleader for the city. And had great conversation with them and ended up being hooked up with the individual who came in and visited Brian. To Brian's point, they wanted to come in without a whole lot of guidance. They want to draw their own conclusion and then come back and present to where they feel they can provide help. But as far as the services they offer, it's anything from ad hoc to, the quotes are, I believe, are in the packet here, up to, you know, somebody in here five days a week to actually be viewed as a city employee. So it's after they come back, we can take a look and determine what the need is, what services they offer. They do grant writing, a lot of other things. I believe they operate in five states, basically everything that borders and touches on us. And they, you know, they're, they're big on the smaller communities, which we're the anomaly. We're a smaller community surrounded by a big city. But my conversations with them, there are a lot of, a lot of things they can do, grant writing and several others as well. So I think it's, next steps are get them in here, listen to what they have to say, and then determine, determine the funding going forward. We have money in our budget to cover it. I don't, we've shifted funding around from supporting some staff, staff levels. And was it $50,000, $60,000 we had slated in current budget? I'm seeing a head nod. So, you know, just, so we've already got that scheduled and slated. The budget came in front of council last week for guidance and direction as far as EDA. I believe we, the council is all aligned with moving forward with the $202,000 adjustment, or, you know, moving forward from an EDA standpoint, so we will continue to be funded to backfill this role as well. So I just, I look forward to hearing from them. You know, have, have a lot of excitement behind it. It's, I think it's what the city, it's what we need. And we've got a lot of vacant land, make a lot, a lot of vacant storefronts in the city as well that they talked about being able to help solicit and find people working with the building owners to bring the right businesses into town.
So that's how they do, they go around and talk? Because right now, when we had the Lily Building there, we had some land that was for sale and ready to go type of thing and that. And across the street, we have the Commons for Margaret. So do we don't, do we have land and get ahold of them? Or do they reach out to the individuals as far as knock on doors from businesses to see, you know, you're vacant? Do you need help trying to get people? Is that encompass all of it? Because right now, there's, there's, there's a spot opened up on Seventh, but we don't have a lot of vacant spots right now. Do they meet with buildings to see, you know, what their plans are? I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out. Before, we had a project that needs to be done, but besides that one over on Seventh, and this one here is underway, how does that look? I guess that's where.
I guess it would be the guidance of, of the CETA EDA.
Right.
And, and their priorities. You know, there's other land to develop. There's, Target's got a lot over there. There's that, you know, we can work with Target with to see what can be done. There's other, other owned, other privately owned land within the city. And just, we don't have anybody cheerleading for the city right now. Article VII is a good example. The timeframe was different, but we didn't end up with any retail on the main level. Not saying that they could help, but they certainly could. You know, the, the EDA reached out to St. Paulport Authority to help basically do the same thing that they offer, but they offer much more than just that. It's, it's grant writing, it's a whole, a whole lot of, they have a, quite a laundry list of things that they provide.
Yeah. That's what I was wondering, because we already had that spot. We needed to do something with the development on that. If we don't have anything existing, how do they look and try to figure out pieces? Okay.
I think part of the key is to get them in front of us, and let's hear what their, their story is and understand, you know, kind of their priorities. But I, reading through it, it sounds like they go under our direction of what, what our priorities are, and they look at it. But it'd be nice to get an outside look also to see what.
And that's where I think we got to work on, is what ours are priorities and what do we have available? We don't want to reach out and that we don't have anything to offer, so we have to make sure we have that on our end, too. Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, they said that they are plugged into different conferences that they go to and different, I don't know if you will, developers. What would you call that? I don't know if there's just a gathering. Is there nationwide or local areas where they're plugged into more developers? And the different conferences that they go to? That's what, how they were saying they were plugged into being able to bring developers in if, or at least that's one of the ways that they can bring them in, so be curious, let's see what they have to say.
It looks like they specialize in kind of Main Street type of development, which I kind of caught my eye of. Might be a good fit.
Yeah.
You know, we're a big, we're a little city in a big city. And I think the Main Street is kind of their, our little gem that we, that we have that is bringing in people.
Right.
So, you know, once we have meet with them and then we can figure out our own, but it sounds like, you know, we're gonna have to have ours ready to have them do it. We can't just throw it to them and say, here you go. We're gonna have to have initial and decide, you know, what we do. Priorities. Here to try to move that forward and delay it. Okay, sounds good.
Is that the last of that?
I think so. That was the last, yeah. Update?
Let's jump into the EDA bylaws.
So the next item is the update to the EDA bylaws. There was a request made to city staff to update the EDA bylaws to move from monthly meetings to quarterly meetings. In your packet, in, in your staff memo, it shows what the change would look like. It'd be section 3.1. Regular meetings, the authority shall hold regular meetings on the second Tuesday of March, June, September, and December, commencing at the regular time and so and so. We chose those dates simply with, you know, wanting to have your last meeting in December and then kind of working backwards that way. You can pick any different months you want. The, the second Tuesday of those particular months are open months or open dates. There's no holidays or random days off or anything like that. So it's, those are good dates, which also factored a little bit into the decision. So you're not moving EDA meetings around, but that is what the change would look like. And I believe the, if, if the EDA wants to move forward with that change, you would need a motion to approve those bylaw changes.
I think either way, it would need to be cleaned up, because I think the bylaws said something different than what the city statute said, so. One said monthly, one said quarterly.
And I should also mention, too, as always, the EDA can call a special meeting for, at any time, for any reason. So if there's, you know, if there's any concern about, wow, we're not meeting frequent, more as frequently enough, you can certainly call, or if something major happens and your, you know, development's coming to town here and you want to meet more frequently, you certainly can. That's, that is not an issue.
So if we wanted to have a meeting like with this party we're talking about?
You could call.
January or January type of thing?
Correct.
Call that then, but just keep this as just the.
As the standard, yeah. And I believe the requirements to call a meeting, I think it should be in here, I'm pretty sure. At least three days prior to a special meeting, you need a written notice, so super easy to do.
Sounds good. Question?
Been talking about doing this for a long time.
Is that March, June? Is that the way that's laid out? Work good for everybody? Yeah. Like I said, as long as we have the three days and we don't have to delay. That was my concern, is, you know, we're talking about this person. If we can, you know, once we get them scheduled, we can call a meeting and try to take care of that sooner than later.
Yeah, the three day notice probably won't work for a lot of us. So if we could, if we have that open conversation. I think two week notice would be good. That's probably the last, you know, worst case scenario. Really, really, really need to.
The law says three days?
That's what it says in your bylaws, yes.
Okay.
So that way we could do it.
You could call it for two weeks from now, and it'd be totally fine. You, it's just for.
The minimum is three.
The minimum is three days for public notice, yeah.
Got it.
We could be talking about a January meeting now. We just have to give notice three days before.
Yeah.
Yep. You good? Yeah, with the motion. Anybody want to move that motion?
So moved.
So moved. Member Matthews? Second?
Seconded.
I can't say your name.
What?
Peter.
Already Peter.
Peter's easy.
Peter's good.
You can't do any motions.
That's fine with me.
Peter, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I haven't practiced, really, I didn't. I was trying to.
All right.
Does that mean the next meeting will be in March, then?
Official one.
Yeah, okay, great, correct.
Are we gonna move on the facade project before that, or?
That's a good question, probably something that we can, you know, like I mentioned, I think early next year is when we're really gonna start delving into it, and we can then connect with the EDA and say, hey, let's hold a meeting on this now, or no, we can wait until March.
I would say if it's ready, I would.
Bring it forward.
Bring it forward and.
I agree.
Well, especially if the RF, if, if this is gonna be done at the end of December, it probably makes sense for us to meet early in the year.
Yeah, it's a great time right now to bring it forward. Yeah. Wintertime, businesses can plan for next year.
There's already been expressed interest as well.
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, I definitely would see the need for at least a meeting sometime in the first quarter prior to the March date, but.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
We'll give plenty of notice, but we'll wait for advancement in that. So we have the information for you. All right, well, staff updates, I think that covered a lot of it. Just FYI update for the student built house is, that's more HRA, but it's a project going over there across from Webster. And they got the sheeting on, they probably got the roof on by now. I know they were sheeting it last week, so it's moving right along. It's nice to see that come together, too. Joe, any further? Any further?
I don't. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
You're right.
Anything else from any member here? I want to bring up that, off the top of their head? You always have a word, Furlong, go ahead.
Was it? No?
Good? Write that down.
Wow.
Can I have your time?
There you go. Balance of the time goes to the member.
I jumped ahead of the other two, but.
Yeah.
All right. Just some follow ups. I know that we've had a conversation with CETA, but Riley, did you have a chance to throw anything out on the LMC bulletin board to see if there's any other companies out there similar to them?
I, I have not put anything out on the bulletin board. I have talked to some other community development folks kind of around us. We meet pretty regularly, I know them pretty well. And we talked a little bit about that, and they said that if I know of something, they'll send it my way, so.
Cool, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. My, my, Target parking lot, the Target lot and the land in front of, and the trees in front of Taco Bell, are we getting any traction out of the county on the, on the easement land in front of Taco Bell? And anything out of Target?
We reached out multiple times, and we were ghosted. I think we're gonna be doing it ourselves.
Can we bill them?
We can.
Nice.
We will.
All right.
That's the trees in the front and the Target's lot, they own that.
Target's a lot, but they're not following our policy as far as it.
Sure.
But we will be able to bill them.
You wanna clear that up a little bit?
All right, I was just gonna.
I think Mr. Frandl's gonna clear something up.
Well, yeah, they, it's really unfortunate, because we work hand to hand with them, in partnership with them, and you'd think they would step up, but, and normally the people that we reach out to are very, they'll get back to you right away, and they haven't, so you kind of wonder, does that come back and bite you later? If you don't, if you do something like that? But I mean, it's just a professional courtesy. You'd think they would follow through with that. But we can certainly bill them and go from there. I know they have new people on board there, on their board, so.
The other one that I have on here, again, it's kind of county related, but it has to do with the turn lane coming off northbound to McKnight into what is the southbound entrance to the Target lot. I'm understanding there's potential development slated in the old ground round spot sometime in 2025, as well as the other businesses that are slated along over there as well. So I don't know if, if that's something that we want to keep on an open topic update, or if we just let it go.
Did you talk to the owner of that lot?
I haven't, but that's, that's what I've been, I haven't personally spoken with, no, but that's what I've been hearing.
Gotcha.
Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
So back when we approached Target, they were kind of the lone soul reaching out to, to do that entrance. And at that time, I don't think they wanted to do it. But I think with Taco Bell now being there, and then with Mueller potentially breaking, breaking ground this spring, I think getting an effort between all three of them or four of them, get the dialogue going again, because I think it would benefit not only Taco Bell, but the Mueller, and, you know, it would benefit Target, I think, greatly. And also the, the bank there, the, the credit union. I think getting all those parties involved and having dialogue with them, I think it would gain a lot of traction. That Target's not the only one, I think.
Think it's necessary?
I think, I think it would be very beneficial to clean up not only that entrance, you know, it's such a runway of cement right there. To have a turn lane in there, you could break up that cement a little bit. You can almost do some landscaping in between or, or whatever. And I think it, I think it'd be really nice to have done.
Well, Taco Bell did a traffic study, and they put it in there. So that's where I was wondering, because this is a couple hundred thousand dollars. If, you know, and I talked to somebody from the county, and they said, well, that median was there so traffic wouldn't cut, because there's so many different spots going up to the freeway there, that it was going around and back in. That's how the easements came through Target. So I just, is there, I'm, that's my opinion, is there, is there really a need for this? I mean, they're all developed as far as people are there. Taco Bell did their study. Do we, you know, as far as the city thing, if they want to do it? But for us to do, you know, $200,000 thing for something that's already working? That's my thought on it. That's why I.
My thought is a cost share, you know, with, with the other properties. And I think if Taco Bell, Corpus sees, starts seeing the number, you know, the traffic count might have been counted on McKnight, but really, what is that count? Is it, it's not people turning in? what is that count? Is it, it's not people turning in. You go by that parking lot now, and it's pretty empty over there. I hate to see them. I just think it'd be very helpful for that.
Was the bank talked to as well? Before, I know we talked to, reached out to Target. Was, did anybody reach out to the bank at that time?
I don't recall.
I don't, I didn't hear.
I don't, I think we kind of put all our eggs in the Target basket, and
We did.
Target didn't necessarily see a huge benefit by investing that money into it at the time, and I think we let it go.
And again, I think it's more of, you know, if you do get Taco Bell involved, if you do get Mueller involved, I think there's more of backbone to Target, you know. Well, there is a need there, I guess, you know. Maybe they didn't see it, but I, I think there is a need, and there used to be one there.
Well, there used to be no median, and then people were turning all over the place, and that's when, when I talked to the county, they said it was a controlled thing to get traffic, so they, everybody wasn't cutting in front of them.
Were conversations had with the county on the feasibility of, and their
Yeah, they, they said they would
Okay.
Was it the county that specifically put the median back in?
The county when they redid the road.
When they redid it, okay.
I forgot who I talked to.
And then we talked to the county afterwards, and they said they, yeah, they could see that.
I apologize, this was all before my time, but that access was there when they redid it, right? Okay, I'm wondering, I'm just
Everybody used to be able to turn. I mean, there was no median, so
Yeah, I'm wondering if the county's looking at it from an engineering standpoint, saying that, that egress is too close to the freeway entrance. I know that was mentioned before. You know, they might have said that for safety reasons, let's close that off, so I can't remember who said it, but
Somebody said that, because that's how they did the, I was talking to somebody about the easements from Target, because they wanted to get the traffic not to go in front of it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember who I talked to, sorry. Because that was, the barrier was there to bring it around, and then they have the, because it's, because I was wondering the same thing, because Target, really, there is no way to get to Taco Bell or any of those unless you're on Target property. So, that was where the easement was in the back, because they're not gonna give them a building permit if they don't have an, an access. So, there's a reason for this to be done, you know, and somebody said it was for the traffic to keep things, so people turning in front and controlled intersection.
And, and that Handy Helpers Building, too, right?
Correct.
That's the only way you can act, is their parking
Everything there, once they, once they put that barrier in, they did a, they did an easement through Target to get to everything back there.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm curious as to why the county, when they reconstructed that, why they put that median in there and not allowing that turn access left. Does anybody have an idea what year that was?
I'm trying to remember. Was that part of the 36 project?
I think it was.
So, we're talking like
That's when the tap and grill went out and they redid that, because it was more of a flooding issue.
It was in 10-ish?
Ish, 10, 11?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's forever.
Somebody had to go through all that half, all that, to get easements for everything back there, so there, I don't think it was, I don't know how it would be controlled, you know, people turning, but
We'll reach out. We'll find out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, anything else on your list, young man?
I, I yield them the rest of my time.
Anybody else? If not, kind of a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
So, move. Brandon, second? Peter, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, Peter.
I remember Peter this time, so we thought we'd take advantage of it. Thanks, everybody.